All right, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Could call the roll, please.
Mr. Huffke. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mark.
Here.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Okay. In your packet, there were minutes from our November 23 committee, the whole meeting. Any additions or corrections to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, moved by trustee Biden and seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Mark.
Yes.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
And Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Any comment from the public? Okay, there's none, and discussion of trustees. We're hoping to have chief here at some point during the committee meeting.
He's actually on your agenda.
Oh, I thought Steve was going to talk to him to come early, right?
As long as he's here.
Just to give you an update for public works.
Yes.
I asked Bob how much salt we've taken delivery on so far, and he told me so far they've only had 50 ton delivered, so we have to take 80% of the contract. I know we contracted 180 tons, so I think it comes out to 150 ton. So we're a third of the way there.
Okay.
What do we do with it if we don't use it? When we take delivery, where do we put it?
The last couple of years, we've actually stored it out at the township ship.
Oh, can you keep that stuff?
I got stuff in the salt dome that's three or four years old. It'll keep, as long as it's dry.
And so then, if we have stuff left over, we cut down on our contract? Or we kind of locked in?
As long as I've been on.
He's pulling around, he may be coming in, so check it out. Do we pay for that, or do we pay for it on delivery?
On delivery.
What's the penalty if you don't take it off?
You have to pay for it anyway.
You what?
Got to pay for it anyway, because that's the contract.
That's all?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just giving them an update. I talked to Bob, we're taking 50 ton. I think the magic number, they had 80%, it's 144s.
Yeah. Steve also mentioned to me, was there, I don't know if he talked to you, but there's some complaint about snow phone and cul-de-sac over on Walnut there.
Yes, and I drove out there, I don't know, the guy was complaining, it's the same cul-de-sac, down the road from Steve's house, actually, on Walnut where he did that drainage.
Sorry, that's okay.
Basically, half of the home sectors, houses, the other half is pretty much open to that, where the water runs down, it's like an open area. And I, I don't know which resident it was, but he was complaining, he would, because we push all the snow up. And Bob, when I went out there, he does a good job of pushing it into the open area, but the gentleman stopped him, and he wants to know why we can't push the snow out of the cul-de-sac down, I think it's five houses, so five yards, and then north to the dead end, you know, under the Terry's property. I just, from experience, I don't think it's practical at all. I don't know what it's hurting, because it's not in front of anybody's house. I mean, I have snow in front of my house, we all do.
Was his objection just the appearance of the snow stacked up?
I asked Bob, and he said he's never had an issue, he's never dealt with this guy before, and all of a sudden, the other day, he came out screaming at him, so he just doesn't want the snow there, he doesn't understand why we can't get rid of it totally.
How much snow was it? I wasn't here, so.
Maybe an inch.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, the pile that was there was hardly anything.
Any other discussion?
Chief's going to be right back.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll take us, go it off.
All right. While we're waiting for him, I don't know if we're going to bring this up in the board meeting or not, what was that memo from Marcie or Stacy about the vehicle stickers? Thought that was just an informational memo for the trustees. This, and she included a copy of our ordinance on the vehicle stickers. And I guess there was some question about senior citizen discounts, and if you're 62 years older, you get a reduced fee of $30. And students, for full-time college students, there's no fee for that, is that right?
That's correct, as long as they bring in proof that the college they're attending is away, and they need to, the cars got to go with them, otherwise it's redundant, and they have to give us proof that they're full-time students.
Right.
I'd like a little clarification on that, I was a little confused when I read it. If you're 62 or over, you get a $35?
Thirty.
Or $30? If you have two cars, you get it then for 60 for two cars?
If there are two of you in the household, and you're both 62 or over, you each get one. And if you have an NEV as well, golf cart, you can get one of those as well, add a senior.
What if you have?
But if there's one senior in the household, and you got two cars, you only get the one senior.
What if you have three cars?
You pay regular price for two, and you get senior on one.
Okay, so that was just thrown in there for some information. Okay. What else, anything?
Water bills are due end of this week. Penalty starts on Monday.
Have a question, we have, I see not many locations, but a few bundles of sticks stacked up by the street, and obviously, it's beyond the stick picking up season.
Right.
Do the people just leave them out there for six months until it comes around again? Kind of a ICOR slash. Well, it's code enforcement, or we can have public force, they got me down time there more, that sets a precedent. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
At one point, when I talked to them, they said if the weather cooperated after Thanksgiving, they were going to do one more courtesy run, because we had all that windstorm. So let me check with them to see why they're ever having, and if they can still do it.
I mean, it may have happened.
They may have, they may have done it, stacked it in the car. Because, I mean, there's just been a lot of stuff down, you know, so people may have just been throwing up there. Yeah, and I don't think we should set a precedent by making a special effort for them.
No, but any other thing, I don't think we should be code enforcing, sticking them with a fine, you should just tell them.
Well, I wouldn't go for a fine, but I'd go for a reminder.
Put them on the side, put them in the back, get them out of the way.
No, I wouldn't want a fine.
When do we start? April.
I think it's the second week in April.
Yeah, I think if we just even did a door hanger, or a reminder, or a note, or something, just.
Get them out of sight.
Yeah, put them out of sight, yeah. And if they don't, it's fine. Then. Then that's up to you guys, then we can do something. But we got to give them some time. Oh, yeah. We have 15, 20 days, or whatever it is, to do it, and then, because we don't have a code enforcement guy here every day now, anyway, so, you know. But I, if you want them removed, that's the way to do it, I think.
All right, chief, as long as we got some time during this meeting, wanted to kind of give us your update on the 911 stuff.
I can give you as many updates, I appreciate the opportunity, I could go home, kick the boots off maybe a little earlier. Oh, yeah, I can cover my old gambit.
We may want you to do a toy.
Just a reminder, I did put on your gentleman desk, it's about the emergency, E-911 has a, an open forum, it's the consolidation, so they have a stakeholders' meeting at the Pike Firders Hall in Mokina on Thursday at 6:30. So what's happened in the last couple of weeks since the beginning of January? I'm on the 911 board as a representative of the chiefs of police. So we had a, we had a scheduled roundtable discussion going on there, right after the first of the year. The day before the meeting is when the county announced that hit the paper that they were going to build, and offered to build a site that would house EastCom, which we belong to, our dispatch group, Lincoln Way, which all the Frankfurt towns, Mokina and Little Lakes, Will County Sheriff, and Romeoville Police, at no cost to the towns involved for the facility. The only cost to us would be the maintenance for the building, and no cost for us for any building, no interest payments, no bond payments. So at the 911 meeting, we're sitting here going, a lot of people question, what's the county doing, why are they doing it? I don't know. Probably, as the paper indicated, it's rare that the two sides of the parties can agree on something. And they, they agreed, and this project, because the sheriff is building a no facility because of age, for the sheriff's operations. So the county's ponying up about $5 million for the port of the, the part of the consolidated dispatch center, at no cost to us involved. That's been one of our problems, thinking about the future is, we have to pay for it also. So as late as last Wednesday, the board of directors for EastCom dispatch group sit down and discuss this, and the mayor was there, and they voted to accept the consolidation position that the county's offered. Some of the boards, after this meeting Thursday, will probably, Lincoln Way will accept it, I know Romeoville's already on. So it's a, they haven't said anything, how the board's going to be, how the operation's going to be, what the makeup of the board, because nobody's taken the lead yet, because it's all new off the press, but it does meet the obligation of Will County's 911 centers in, in our backyard, that has to be reduced from six to three by state law. And now that plan has to be submitted to Springfield by July of this year. So it's been a very exhausting discussion, because the legislation passed so hurriedly through the system. I mean, this, this stuff isn't a year old, but, you know, it moved very quickly, and a lot of discussions. So the stakeholders' meeting, the mayor wanted to make sure everybody was given the opportunity to listen, if you want to listen. The east side is already committed to it, I think everybody's in this suspicion, why is the county doing this? If I could understand government, I guess I'd have the secret book. It's, something has to get done, and it's good that the county government took the lead, because they don't want to run the dispatch center, but they know they have to add a building for the sheriff's operations. So they're, they're also offering to expand the complex, to include the, the radio room for the, all the agencies, and also house the 911 administrative offices. So right now, those are on the, near Plainfield. So you know as much as I do on this concept, like I said, very, very new. Some of the other boards, like Lincoln Way, haven't voted on it officially yet, but the EastCom board did discuss that. But the, the final outcome is Will County is meeting the obligation that we have to reduce by 50% our dispatch centers, and the focus of this is to eliminate the public's and improve response to the public to emergency calls. That's the whole focus of it, no more transfers, no more delays. So with that, you'll have, at EastCom, we have eight fire and seven police agencies. At Lincoln Way, see, they got, one, two, three, you got the big three police departments. They have Manhattan, that's four. They got North, they got Joliet Township Fire, and they have all the fire agencies over there associated with that, so they got three different fire districts over there, and Manhattan Fire District, so four different agencies, and then you add Romeoville with police and fire, and then you have Will County with just police. So about 50% of the calls for service could easily go through that center.
And where's this at right now, where you're rolling?
Yeah, when you see where the sheriff's facility, at the triangle, because you've got Forest Reserve there, and you got Highway Department, then you have, I call it Old Lareway. Well, to the west of there, in that, you used to see all the parked cars there, the fields, the field just west of the Lareway Sheriff Facility, is a big open field there. They're putting it there, and they're, they, they got Joliet City Bring Water Sewer, which is across the street, and that's what the sheriff needed, because that's all septic and well water on that side of the corner. So they'll be very happy to get Joliet Water and Sewer, because the whole complex, that triangle, is all well and sewer, septic for that whole triangle. That's been a problem over there, that whole, all those county, they call it the county triangle. So I don't know what they, they finally got Joliet City in them, so they, they, they're tapping into their well and water and sewer, which they need to do. So I'm sure there'll be more discussions. We have no idea, realistically, it's going to be about two years before the, it gets built. Now with the idea that these agencies are going to be part of it, now they're back to the draw team to make the building bigger, the idea, I mean, so looking at maybe first shovel, probably May, June of summer, because that's, the architect has to get all the new stuff put together and draw it. So, you know, and who knows how long it'll take to build it, but, you know, so we, it just paid probably a couple of years, but now, once these, all these stakeholders go all in, then you have to sit up deciding how it's going to be managed, who's going to, operations, finance, how we're going, how we pay the people. We have three different unions represented by all those groups for the dispatchers, so there's a lot of parts of discussion that have to be handled.
And so you said, we'll be on the hook for partial, part of the maintenance, they're going to split it somehow?
Well, what they're going to do is, what the county board indicated, says, listen, we'd like a little bit of money put aside for the janitorial service, we don't want to have to pay for that, for your portion of it. We'd like you to, for the upkeep of the building, so in a few years, if the roof goes bad, I'd like to have a little money, so you guys can afford to have the roof fixed, and we'll pay our fair share to the co-opt that's in the building. So that's kind of, those things have not been ironed out, but that was the point they made on this, you know. They're spending for the sheriff's facility, for the 911 facility, and for the dispatch facility, they said it's a $20 million project that they're, they're funding.
Will they know these maintenance and those fees before?
Before we get in the door? They don't know until they see the operations, we get it built, and know, but these are, these are points that we, the group has to sit down and iron out. There are no set rules how this whole consortium of people will operate. And a lot of the politicians are saying, well, who's going to be in charge, what's going to be in charge? At the board of directors for EastCom last Wednesday, I indicated that Will County does not want to run the center, they want the co-opt to run the center. They don't do fire dispatch, so they don't have no idea what to do with it. So it's a whole new perspective, because things have all changed with all this consolidation. It used to be, everybody had their own backyard consolidation, everybody knew the dispatchers firsthand. Things have changed, it's not like it was 20 years ago, it's not going to be like this in the next five years. But operations, how it's going to run, what the costs are going to be, these are discussion points that they would like to sit down with representatives, Lincoln Way, EastCom, Romeoville, and the sheriff, and the county, sit down and iron out. But nobody's, wants the iron fist, they want it to be a, a discussion point of saying, what, what's the fees going to be, and what the costs are going to be. At the board of directors meeting, they put stipulations that they did not want to see an increase in our fees presently, that would just make it financially, you know, we pay right now about $105,000 for dispatch service a year. That's what our Pea Town portion is. So, you know, and every town gets associated every, every year with a fee, and what it takes into account is population, the amount of activity you have on the system, and, and then they have set costs for administration, the, you know, the equipment and all this, so that every person that's in it has a set cost, fire and police. So with that, our, some board members will remember when I had become a, a few years ago, when I first became chief, when we took a $50,000 bump, and I had to come and explain, because the way we were calculating numbers, we had to meet our obligations, so in one year, I took a, it was a very hard time to come in at budget time and go, oh, by the way, we just went up 50,000. The seven members of the board took it very well, even though I was crying on the inside, because that's a big jump for dispatch service for anybody, and Pea Town is a big jump. Over the years, because of the way the formulas have been changed, now we're about 105,000. We have more people in our dispatch group, so with that, your costs can go down, because there's more people bringing money into the system. So we've increased, since that time, we had Steger, we had South Heights, we had both those fire agencies, so, and, so those add to the people involved, they'll pay the bills.
So is there, what are these, within the next year or two, is, there's not going to be EastCom anymore, we're going to be all consolidated to one and call it something else?
They'll be called something else, yes.
And currently, there's four separate of these operation centers running that are going to be consolidated into, so currently, there's money, money being spent to keep all four separate going. So on the surface, it sure sounds like costs shouldn't go up.
They should. That's kind of why I asked, I'm curious to see what our cost is going to be, because if we're paying 105, I'd hate to see it go to 150, just so we're helping to pay for the building.
Well, the thing that the sheriff and the county, I mean, the county board members, both sides of the party says, you're not paying for any of the building. And that's got all the politicians going. And they're not charging us rent.
Yeah, well, it sounds like a good deal.
So that's two stipulations, they said.
What about the equipment, is it new equipment?
Equipment's all provided by 911, those are all funded through the 911 surcharge. So the sheriff doesn't pay for any councils, all that stuff that fits in, the computers and all that, and all the software, that doesn't come out of our money, as village money, it's all paid by the surcharge money that everybody's paying on their phones, their cell phones.
Oh, okay. Do you think our service will be enhanced, or lesser than what it is?
I'm an optimist. And the reason I say that, I mean, everybody loved it when they knew the dispatcher by the first name, and they knew, and the dispatcher knew you, they knew who your dog was, but those days are starly, they're, they're, they're really gone. The fortunate thing is, that I, and I'm, like I said, is when you dial 911, you do not want to be moved to another dispatcher to find, oh, that belongs over here. That happens, and it's happening since 911 was created. See, in Will County, in the beginning, they had 14 P S A's. In the old days, because every town had their own little 911 center. So to, and it may have been more than that, I just say 14, because I can't, even though I was around then, but every Pea Town had their own, and we had Moni with us, and Beecher with us, and that was it. Now, like I said, so there's about 14 centers in the beginning, when it all went 911, and now it will be three, because you just can't afford to be in the dispatch business. Bullenbrook recently closed theirs, and went to a center called WestCom, over there in Plainfield, because you can't afford to run personnel and benefits and everything else that have 24/7 dispatchers for fire and police. So to answer your question is, when people dial 911, and you deal with today's region where this encompasses the new, the new group, unnamed group, you will have not only every police agency west of, east of the river, but you also have all the fire. And because these fire districts, I mean, when people dial 911 and they need fire, and they have their serious health conditions, you want to get to people rolling as quick as you can. And because of the, the mapping of fire districts, you know, you could easily call, you could be out west of our town, and you could be in Manhattan Fire District, and you're going to ring the phone, and you may pick up a, your cellphone may hit our dispatch center in Crete, and then they would answer it and have to switch you to the Lincoln Way Fire District where this is going on. Well, that's what they're wanting to prevent. So it'd be, as I say, optimistic to say it could work better, because then, when the call comes into a call center, whether police or fire, wherever the boundary is, the boundaries are in the same room. So you could go, hey, you're in a call center, and that belongs to Pea Town Police, then you hit them, you send it to the Pea Town dispatcher, you don't have to pick up the phone, and we spend so much time doing this. Pick up the phone, to call the, some other responding agency, hey, can you send help? Can you send this fire agency over? That goes on a lot in the system, and that's what they're really trying to prevent. So do I think, yeah, I think it will improve service. Will, you know who's talking to you? By, no, it'd be operator XYZ, ABC, but as I said in the beginning, the days of no one, the people at the end of the phone are really over. You know, they have a job, and their, their job is very technical at the dispatch center. You know, they got to be able to give emergency medical instructions, they have to know where you're at, everything's computerized, they got to, you know, the system tells you who to send, what to send, how much to send, and, and then they've got, dealing with the public, trying to get information that sometimes they don't give us great information. So lots going on, so it's not like the old, the old days when I started, those days are now behind us, so. Not to ramble, I know I got some time to kill. But I know, but it's just, it's, I think it's over.
So is there a difference between Will County and Cook County dispatching?
There will be Cook County, some of those agencies under, they have to consolidate, because every one of those agencies up there, when because every one of those agencies up there, if they have a separate PSAP board, you know, they're, they're running into finances too, because what happens is, when you have a, when you have a separate PSAP, let's say, town, town A, let's just pick Bowenbrook, they were in town, wherever, if they were in Cook County, every dime that they collect on 911 money, they have to fund the equipment upgrades for that center. That comes out of their money they collected, doesn't come out of Will County money, because Rowanbrook was collecting their own. And they had a higher rate, because they knew, but now the equipment comes due, that stuff ain't, isn't cheap. So, what happens, when you have personnel costs, and you have equipment costs, you will see consolidation. So, in Cook County, yes, it will affect them, but the PSAPs up there right now, as this consolidation and the state new board of 911 is created, they said there's a little bit over, I know there's over 300 PSAPs in the state of Illinois. They have to present consolidation plan to make sure they're running efficiently and financially fiscal, because now, everybody has to send financial reports to the state 911 board to say how your money's being spent and it's being reviewed.
The reason I ask that, I didn't bring this up before, is because there are, that I know, still to this date, six municipalities that are on the same band. Those municipalities, out of the six, I'm sorry, five, out of the six, three of them, three of the municipalities dispatch out of what they call Oaklawn Central. Oaklawn Central consists out of Alseb, Oaklawn, and Evergreen Park. You also have Marriott Park, that's on its own, which is a small little community. In Hometown where I used to be, and I used to dispatch, and I used to be with the police department and that, they used to cross train us and all that, so. And in Hometown, it's a small community, less population than what we have here, and not even half the businesses. But yet, we dispatched fire and police on our own. And why is it that Piattone can't do that?
Why? Careful, they tried it.
So, they're saying $105,000.
Oh, you couldn't pay for people, because you have to have two, two people in the dispatch room by 911 standards. Agencies in the beginning used to be able to get by with one. And when they started saying 911 standards, say, two, well, you start doubling your, and the, EastCom's been in formation for about 15 years, give or take, one or two years difference. That was because 911 said, Pramber says you must have two dispatchers in there. Now, what other towns did, Piattone, that's why EastCom was formed. Piattone closed, Crete got together, University Park closed, they all came to EastCom, because they, and over the last few years, since it started about 15 years ago, that's why it went from 15 or 14 PSAPs to six presently. And now, because of the legislation said you will reduce by 50% or less, no less than two, that's why we have to get right down to three. But by the cost factor, you couldn't run a dispatch center. Number two is, 911 pays for the equipment. You can't even, you ask Bowenbrook, they couldn't do it. And they had a lot more revenues from their businesses coming in.
So, Piattone used to have their own?
When 911 started, yes.
And you used to have one dispatcher? And EastCom came up with the idea of, the state came up with the idea that you have to have two?
Stager was one of the entities for last, when they came on board with us, they were still trying to get by with one dispatcher, and they get, were on notice, and they finally had to give it up, and they closed and went to EastCom.
I mean, for as many calls as we have, I know that between fire department and...
That wasn't, the issue wasn't...
I understand, I understand, it's just, okay.
Well, Illinois is a state of unfunded mandates, I mean, the problem is, if you are on your own, stay on your own, they're going to mandate like they did with the 800 megahertz system, and that's going to throw a small town into a tizzy, because we can't afford to buy radios that go along, because it's not just the base unit, we'd have to re-outfit all the cars and everything, so that's why the 911 board comes in handy and helps do all that stuff. So, I was on the Board of SouthCom, and it was the same way, everybody thought, well, why can't we do this independently? Just the law of numbers said they can't, it's just tough, especially with the unfunded mandates.
Well, in the, in the same time, Oaklawn up there, isn't that, who went private? Oaklawn?
Oaklawn Central is actually, they took over Evergreen Park.
Yeah, they, they not vote, and they go civilian?
Yes, yes.
And, yeah, and that will open up a whole nother door.
And like I say, Hometown still does, and Hometown is still, your police officers dispatch, I mean, and they, you know, so it's...
But you're not going to see, you know, it's a very expensive world, and when you start having to buy all that 911 equipment, that's all enhanced, and it's supercomputers, I call it, and super systems, you got to pay for all your lines that run everything to you, big bucks.
All right, thank you.
If I could grab one more point, just to remind the board members, next Monday at 6:00, there's a, I call it the liquor roundtable discussion with the liquor people. Donna is hosting his open meeting, so there is, there is no handcuffing of anybody if you come and listen, because more than two of you show up, it's a, it's an open meeting as well. So, Donna and I discussed and said, well, it's, we'll conduct it as a meeting, the roundtable discussion on liquor, you've seen some, and I'll, I'll get the press flyer on before I leave today.
That's here.
February 1st, next Monday, here.
That's here.
Right.
Okay.
So, I actually covered my 7:00 report. You're on probably a great early.
Again, you got to...
I just tried to follow, you know.
Well, just so you know too, one of the ideas, and Chief, you can back me up on this, one of the ideas discussed at one of the many meetings was that EastCom build their own facility, brand new, and charge each member $50,000 a pound, and then they would borrow the rest of the money. And I don't see any way how we could have done it, several other towns could have done it, so, the, the economy of scale is, is that the Will County thing does work out a little better, so.
I like the idea, I just want to know what our costs are going to be.
And that, and that is a constant question that, I'm sure you're going to hear about that Thursday, but as I could re, be repetitive, is, these are things that they, and we're hoping we can get representatives are, from each center, police and fire, the mayors, the village managers, to be at this discussion, because all of the parties involved for the, each center, and sit down and understand that, you know, how we got to get these questions answered, and know how much things are going. And at our Board of Directors of Lincoln, of EastCom, you know, with Mike Einhorn and then, you know, we run the most efficient, cost-effective center in Will County, because our cost to our people-involved agencies with us, we have a more even formula across the board. So, with Lincoln Way, we're probably, we're about a half million dollars lighter on the budget than they are. And then, when you go further to the west, it just keeps escalating. And so, with that, we think it's positive to bring to the discussion point, because, you know, everybody's just, has to sit down and, and you, we do make it a little complicated, because sheriff has ASME Union, and Lincoln Way, and, and EastCom have Teamsters Unions, and I don't know what Rommeville has, but I'm sure they're, they got a seal of a union too. So, how do you deal with the union matters? Well, that's going to take a lot of people to sit down and, and deal with that. And this time to build is also time to tackle these matters, the issues on this. But I can fill you on one other good news. All of it's just news, some of it can be good, or, this can be overwhelming, because you're like, wow, what's this all mean? There's so many unknowns we don't know, but before the holidays, I was, this department received, and I know the press have been inquiring about it, I went down and seen the sheriff of Kankakee, and they awarded, it's been turned over to our, our fund, we received $40,000 on a three-year-old drug case, seizure, when Kankakee sheriff seized about 1.56 million dollars. And it went through all the systems, and the feds, and everybody involved, and, and our dog was assisting on that, so we recently, in the last couple of weeks, since the board meetings were going on, we received $40,000. It can be used for everything except personnel. You cannot use federal funds. You can buy equipment, and you can do everything, but you can't use it to, to pay people. So, it's in a, we have to keep track of it, and it's, it's federal money that Marcy has accounts set up, but I did go down, and the sheriff was very appreciative, and, and I was shocked that you're dealing with the issues in Kankakee, I finally got it. I know that the, the debt has been caught, questioned me, because they always said, we hear you're getting money, we hear you're getting money. And I said, well, until I see the check, I don't believe in money. So, I kept hearing it, hearing it, and then one day, before the, right around, before the end of the year, I get, I opened my mail, and I see a check, and I'm thinking, from Kankakee County, and I open it, it's a $40,000 check, I thought it was some, you know, if we serve a warrant for a guy, they send us 70 bucks back, you know, if we arrest him. So, I'm thinking it's one of those checks. So, I'm open, I said, $40,000. Well, the sheriff was waiting to give it to me firsthand, and he didn't know the clerk down there was, sent, I hit the postal mail, but when they got their 1.2 million, the feds sent that to them in a check, you know, with the US mail, that's how they got it initially. I go, really? So, but like I said, it's put in the fund, it's, it just, you know, I guess, bad guys zero, good guys one.
$30,000.
$30,000. Like, yes, but I know, like I said, the debt, Chris has called me many times, I keep hearing about this money, I said, well, I haven't seen it, but I finally have to end that. And like I said, the restrictions are, we have to account for it, and, which we do have some federal asset forfeiture funds, but we just can't pay for people time. No overtime or no debt, and they can buy, you can buy squad, you can buy whatever you want with that money.
Do you have a timeframe you have to use again?
No, we do not.
So, speaking of bad guys, what, do you have any update on the thing that happened at Doc's?
No, I don't, I, I, the town of Beecher has not really supplied much information other than what's been in the press.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn committee of the whole.
Motion.
Then moved by trustee Huckey, seconded by trustee Hat.
Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Mr. Hat?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned for 15 minutes.